On Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and I call this meeting of the Beltrami County Board of Commissioners work session to order. Do we have any new employees to introduce? Seeing none, identifying future work meeting topics. Yes, sir.
You guys while getting an email from International Masonry Institute. Offering their services free of charge, at least coming into a presentation talking about. Jail project. Just a quick word from the email, we're pleased to offer our complimentary services. Aimed at optimizing project outcomes while upholding the values of excellence and collaboration inherent in masonry work. This is an opportunity to collaborate and innovate. Basically, they're offering their their expertise and services. When it comes to masonry work as it relates to the jail project. I found the email intriguing, certainly. Think it couldn't hurt to see what they have to say as far as their. Free consulting on their. Designs and expertise in the matter, so. This is the International Masonry Institute.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just in response to that, I I saw that too and looked at it, but I think it's a. I looked at it in the end that it was just a promotion of self or an advertisement. And I didn't look at any different than advertisement because I know we've been pretty skilled at going through RFPs and things with. Our resources, so just my comment to that.
Yes, sir.
And to further that, I think we need to trust the organization that we've hired to design, you know, Klein McCarthy and and, you know. Kraus Anderson and Contagility Group, and we need to, you know, go by what they suggest if they suggest to do something in Steel versus Masonry or whatever, you know. I think we need to leave it up to the experts that we've hired and contracted with.
And I'm guessing we're not building this with toothpicks anyway, right? Pretty much a lot of masonry in there. Okay, good enough. Anybody else? Tim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, for a future work meeting topic, I'm thinking maybe an update from our lobbyists down in San Paulo. I know that. Uh, session is is gonna be coming to an end here probably within, you know, the next month. So maybe something in June, July, kind of an update on some of the things that he worked for, you know. A lobby for on our behalf and things like that and.
Having Eric come up, doing a recap. Yep, that's a good idea. Yep, good idea.
Thank you.
Richard?
Yes. I attended help, a mental health. Session with our department and Jeff. And one of the things that was brought up was kind of the historical perspective of what what it was like in two thousand eleven. When I came on board with mental health and opportunities or lack of opportunities that we had then and where we are today. And I think it would be a good informational. Opportunity for all of you to hear where we're where we are now compared to then and what opportunities we still have and we're working on.
Can fit that in somewhere, Tom?
I I can't just Commissioner Anderson, just for clarity standpoint, what what specifically are you looking for in your presentation? So I get the right staff and the right subject.
Sometimes you get criticism throughout the community about not doing enough for mental health.
Right.
And I want people to hear in a public meeting that there's been a lot done, a lot more to do. But where have we been a few years back and where are we? Where are we at now? And our partnerships maybe with Sanford also would be good to bring in.
Perfect. We'll do that. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Moving on to the resolution of support for the psychiatric residential treatment facility. Hi, Anne.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. That's a great segue into my presentation to build some capacity in the mental health system.
And we didn't even talk about that beforehand.
So I'm Anne Lynn South. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services for Beltrami County. And I'm here today to talk with you about a request from Clay County, Minnesota, which is the Moorhead area. Clay County is working on procuring some state bond funds to build a psychiatric residential treatment facility or a PRTF is what I'm going to reference as we move through here. They have a provider who is able to provide PRTF services in Clay County. But they need bonding funding to build the facility. The plan for the facility would be that it would hold between twelve and eighteen beds. There is currently some legislation in both the House and the Senate introduced by Representative Keeler and Senator Rob Kupac. To support this effort and to date over twenty Minnesota counties have provided board resolutions in support of this PRTF development. So you may ask, what is a PRTF? It is a facility that provides support and treatment for youth under the age of twenty-one who suffer from complex mental health conditions. So this is often youth who have behavioral challenges and a lot of times there's very few options statewide for placement. Children's residential treatment has shrunk significantly over the years. Just in the past three years. We have lost thirty percent of children's residential treatment beds in the state of Minnesota. And a statistic that really floored me and I want to share with you Commissioners is that Minnesota ranks fifty out of fifty states with the fewest number of psychiatric beds per capita. So development in this area is is absolutely critical. Unfortunately, because of this lack of beds, we see youth who have these complex mental health issues who are in inappropriate placements. So maybe they are boarded at an emergency department, at a juvenile treatment center, in a hotel. And unfortunately, we have seen youth in these situations who have had to stay in county social service buildings overnight and sometimes for weeks until placements are found. We luckily in Beltrami County have not had this occur, but there are a number of counties across the state who have housed youth with these complex mental health issues. And truly, it's the great work of Health and Human Services staff and stars aligning to allow us to get youth into appropriate placements across the state. But it is becoming absolutely more challenging than it has been in the past. So PRTFs, they're a critical piece of that mental health continuum of care. Any development in Minnesota is going to assist us to provide placement access across the state's continuum. So it will open up beds and access to placement across the state if we build one in Moorhead, if we build one in southern Minnesota, even though it's not. Necessarily in Beltrami County's backyard, it assists Beltrami County residents because it opens up that continuum of care access for us. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about Clay County's PRTF development. But I'm also requesting that the board support through a resolution. This effort that Clay County is making. So any questions that the Commissioners have for me?
Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you mentioned twelve to eighteen beds and Minnesota is fifty out of fifty. I imagine that those beds would fill up rather quickly and then what?
The beds will fill up quickly, but it is not, the facility is not meant for a long term stay. So it's a treatment facility with hopefully the end result in the youth going into a step down facility. So that's why I say it opens up that access to the continuum of care. If we have someone who is having a critical mental health need, they can go into that high level of care, high acuity placement. And then hopefully be stabilized, stay there until their treatment is completed and move into a lower level of care. So it's kind of, it's a door that opens up and then people move on to different facility types.
So do you have any numbers of how many of our our youth or adolescents that are. That need treatment for psychiatric. Mental health reasons in Beltrami County?
I do not have any data off the top of my head, but I can certainly get back to the Commissioners on mental health statistics for you.
And I know you mentioned that, you know, currently that there are some that go to hotels or stay in ERs and things like that. Do they go to any other facilities currently or?
There are other PRTFs across the state, so if you look, I attached some information.
Seen Grand Rapids, St. Peter.
There's one in development in Grand Rapids, but there are, let's see. Hundred and fifty PRT bed, PRTF beds across the state. It's just that there's not enough for the demand. So the expansion is really critical for that continuum of care.
So then how how would? Families that are in crisis like this deal with a situation like this, you know, what? Uh, Moorhead, you know, being three hours away from, you know, for some folks that don't have transportation, do we have a a plan to help? In that in that situation?
Yep, we try to support our families that we're working with so that they are able to do family visits and such so that they can support their youth. Yes.
Okay. Heck yeah.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that could also be a little bit of what I'm requesting from the next presentation. We do a lot, I think, for adult population, but we we have a long ways to go with our with our children.
I suspect that that could be a potential cost savings for the county if there's additional beds available nearby.
PRTF beds are funded by medical assistance, so there is no local county cost when youth are put into that level of care.
Just remind everyone that that is on the consent agenda, so if you have any opposition, now would be the time to bring it up. All right. Thanks, Anne.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Uh, who's gonna lead this? Danielle, are you gonna lead this or Tom, are you gonna lead this? Did you guys practice this or?
We did.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. It's an exciting day for the jail project. We have your quarterly update for you that we'll be presenting tonight as a team. I want to introduce the team, but first talk to you a little bit about the project. We are about fifty percent designer so, which is pretty exciting. So we're gonna be able to share with you tonight some interior pictures, exterior pictures, floor plans, site plans, those types of things. So that's kind of exciting. We're also gonna talk with you about the scope, the schedule, the budget, as well as those design considerations. And then along the way, we'll be pausing because we do need to get some direction from you on a couple of high level. Components of the of the project itself. So as those come up, we'll stop and we'll just get your thoughts. We don't need any real formal approvals, but we would like general consensus in regards to directions moving forward as it relates to continuing the design process. So without further ado, just gonna let you know that you'll have a number of folks presenting to you this evening. First, we're gonna start with Pat Wertz from Kraus Anderson. He's gonna talk about the schedule and the scope and the and the budget. Then then Danielle Reed, who's our architect from Klein McCarthy Architects will present. The the fun stuff, right? The pictures and the drawings and the site plans and all that kind of stuff and get you pretty excited about that. And then our own very own Steve Shadrick, our facilities director, is going to talk with you about one of the design considerations that. Will will be asking you for some direction on as it relates to the maintenance shed and operations around grounds maintenance at the facility. Once it's open, for example, snow removal, lawn care, those types of things. So we've got a couple of different options for you to consider that way. We've got about forty-five minutes or so scheduled for this. And so we'll kind of be moving through as we go. Ask questions along the way because it's a lot of information. That way we can make sure we get your questions addressed right in in time with the information that's being presented. So without further ado, go ahead and introduce Pat. Do you want to come up? Being here again.
Welcome, Pat.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having us. We even got a fan with a PowerPoint, too.
Nice. Yeah. Good luck with the clicker.
Yeah. Is it reverse? It's kind of joke you guys played.
Batteries are backwards.
Yeah, well, good. Pat Wertz, Senior Project Manager with Kraus Anderson Construction. I know most of you all, so nice to meet you all again. See y'all. So we're gonna give a brief update over the last couple of months, you know, since we got on board, we've been working hand in hand with Contagility and Klein McCarthy and kind of going through. Getting your guys' project kind of online and schedule and kind of have a few options to discuss today. All right, here's kind of the overall project budget summary, you know, so we kind of build it is over project costs. We have construction broken out, but we took the eighty million dollars. The approved thing and kind of worked down backwards from there. So if you kind of follow. So we spent probably maybe five or six weeks ago. Us Contagility, we're down in Klein McCarthy's office, walking through, spent about probably eight hours going through line by line through the estimate, the schematic design drawings and just really kind of honing in on it. With Contagility's experience with Klein McCarthy, thinking of past projects and looking at areas where they ran into, have certain things like bad, trying to think of everything to go into it. Do we get everything? No. We're trying to think of all those different things to go back, especially the site conditions. We came up roughly about sixty-eight million, eight hundred and sixty thousand for schematic design budget. So that's all construction costs, all of our site services fee and everything's included in that number. And then the way you see kind of broken down is the design and engineering cost for Klein McCarthy, that would be part of your soft cost or project costs. And then we spent a few other different meetings too, kind of going through the FFNE budget, we call that the owner's soft costs and we kind of compiled all those different bills for FFNE and. Plans survey and infrastructure, like I said, to kind of working up Steve Shadrick and his team as well and getting all those things ironed out. And recommend that project contingency, which should be your guys' contingency to offset state plan review fees, added scope, et cetera, any unforeseen conditions, whatever it may be. And then we allocated, you know, three million bucks back to existing jail to, you know, those costs. And then any other additional money we kind of get for that, we'll kind of build that budget up, you know, like we talked to John at the last meeting too, is any other savings kind of roll into that? Oh, yeah.
So if there's any question, there's a lot of data sort of behind the numbers that you're seeing. We try to give you as much. Not too much breakdown. To get into the weeds, but enough to capture those soft costs for you. So it's simple on construction, pretty simple on design. Certainly. Moving forward, we'll vet out some of those orders, soft FFNE costs as we start gathering and gaining more accuracy on what those numbers mean.
So she probably introduce Steve Shadrick, okay, and you guys know Larry too.
Yeah. And then below the line, there were some additional items to consider. I know one of the talking points today is on the maintenance building or options for maybe a maintenance building. Some additional design decisions that may affect KMA's fees. And we'll continue to look for other alternates that may affect construction dollars also, whether they're adds or deducts. To play into how we ultimately know, but this is a form that we'd like to keep using. The update, we start with your total project hours available, keep checking it as the project moves forward, the next estimate and as construction plays out. Any questions on that?
I was just thinking about the irony of the estimated state plan review fees on a jail that they're requiring us to build and then they're and then they want us to give them another quarter of a million dollars back in fees. Just bites. It bites.
That's just the planner dues. It can be another additional four or K or so on building permits. So. Be nice if it was only two.
I had to get that in, sorry, Pat.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Little concerned about us, you know, I I know that we have a max budget of eighty million, but I don't want to be thinking that we're gonna be spending all eighty million. And so the the building construction cost estimate of sixty-eight, eight, I think, you know, from what we were at before, all of a sudden it's grown by about four million bucks. From what we had seen on our spreadsheet before for the estimate, I'm just concerned about, you know. We don't want to spend to the max budget. We want to spend what we need and and then make decisions like we're talking about tonight for. And I'm assuming that that maintenance shop is not in this number yet, so that would be on top of this. And I'm just concerned about scope creep and and keeping the the budget under because we don't have a real firm idea whether three million is gonna be enough for what we need for the old facility. So I don't want to blow everything except that and then find out we're a million short or two million short on what we need to do, what we need to do for the old facility. So we can. Try to keep the 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 numbers way below the eighty million if if possible.
That have been discussed that are gonna be implemented that just happen to be, they'll show up in the design development drawings. I know we talked about the roof, for example, some changes happening on that. So there'll be some money in that regards. And then, you know, next discussion, we talk about schedule, we'll we'll have some impact as well.
Ju- ju- just so you're aware, Commissioner Gosbig, your name has come up repeatedly in our design committee conversations.
Yeah, shocker.
So it's a point well taken. Larry mentioned how we look at those things that we can help with. This is based on schematic design. It's schematic. So as more detail, next level estimates are provided, we continue to hone in. And hopefully, yes, reviews have already looked at some of those reduction items that are getting built in by Danielle's team into the next set of documents that was to me.
Go ahead, Pat. Sorry.
That's all right. Steal away. So next slide is we put together a couple of different options. I don't know, Steve, if you want to talk on this one.
I certainly can. We did an option one and an option two on schedule, so within your packet, I'm not sure if you've had any time to take a look at that. We tried to condense it into hopefully a one page talking point on each. Uh, option, option one, understanding that you want to start early. As always, if we can, you know, an option to start this fall, but what that does mean is working through the winter months. And that, of course, adds some cost. So it's taking it from. Basically, November, I think we looked at it, basically. Through the following year. December. Twenty-six. Yes, yeah, yes.
And so I think one of the biggest things to note in those two is. Is it be two bid packages, so to have a client McCarthy, do different packages, there's costs associated with that. And then by starting, so if you were to bid it out, let's say first bid package would be site, structure, footings, foundations, all that, we have to submit to the state for plan review. We put the kind of a cross cross comparison between Contagility and K about fifteen or sixteen projects. And the earliest the state ever got back from plan interview was sixteen point two five weeks. So.
That's the earliest.
That's earliest. So that puts us starting right towards the end of October, which happens to put us right in winter conditions. You know, so the option is we could keep doing that, but you know, building in Minnesota, northern Minnesota, you can, it's possible, but it costs a lot of money. So that's where we looked at two different twofold of, okay, do we want to pull this one, put together the costs? You know, understand those costs that the county is associated to by, you know, housing up prisoners to different jails. So we looked at different components. You can see the top one, the estimated one was a hundred and seventy-three K to Klein McCarthy for the two bid packages. Uh, we did extensively because we want to protect ourselves some as well because, you know, obviously if we had a winner like we did this last one, we'd be skipping the bank. However, previous two winters before that were not very conducive to building. So we say worst case scenario, you have to add one and a half site services, there's a hundred and sixty-two thousand on that. And then probably roughly five hundred K for estimated cost premium to build through the winter. Now, once again, these are all just kind of allowances. You don't know the true cost until you get through it. That was our best estimate is about eight hundred and thirty-five K to build through the winter. Especially for a project of this size, you have massive areas for footings and foundations exposed to elements, you have frozen fill risks. It's a lot of. Risk points you got to go through to make sure we build the best building possible.
We have about twelve weeks of below grade footings and foundation work. So if you can wrap your arms around that and think of an open trench, the footings, it's a foundation wall, getting it up to grade and backfilling it. Keeping the pile open, making sure you're working around the cold weather on concrete delivery. Like you said, we we did look specifically, we looked at actually thirteen of our projects. Twelve of which we actually had dates because they've already submitted. We have one project right now submitted. Number first, and I understand that as of a week ago, we were within the top eight at the state, but we don't have plan review back. And when you get plan review back, it's not a automatic permit. Usually there's a list of things that need to be corrected now, hopefully on a footing and foundation supplemental. Pretty simple, pretty straightforward, but in developing this model on the November, we took the sixteen weeks and projected it out. That got us into mid-October. And a footing foundation, it was a footing and foundation supplemental and actually was on the Itasca project. So, you know, we didn't feel going any, you know, thinking we're gonna get it any earlier than that when the trend hasn't been there. I think I estimated about nineteen on average, so teased all that out by the time Danielle had finished and Pat wanted, you know, your group. June twenty, that was the thought. Sounds early, get it submitted. One would think we'd be able to get started in September, but based on that review period. Yeah, that puts us pretty much at November-ish, November one, first week in November. Yeah, that puts us pretty much at November-ish, November one, first week in November to actually get started, we can't. Necessarily dig a trench and start pouring any holdings that are inspected, this requires state inspections as we move forward into construction. Without a permit, we can't get the permit until the plan review is done by the state. And, you know, any questions or comments they have, there's a back and forth response period. It kind of sets sets the pace of where. Option one kind of got developed, so we laid out some pros and cons. You know, it it's great, it's going to cost money, the pros are, gives us the earliest start point. It assumes, you know, your baseline for the outsourced housing cost is zero. On the tail end, because this is sort of the earliest net outcome of a scheduled delivery at the end of the project. And then totally start prep, you know, we could do that. Pretty much anytime and we don't need a permit to. Scrape the ground and set up swift controls and boundaries and, you know, mobilize at the site. But the cons are, the biggest con, obviously, this is. At risk for the state permitting process. Is the most costly, we'll get to the net maybe in slide two. And we still need city agreement on road restrictions.
Yep.
We're not sure a pioneer can be navigated during spring.
Questions on option one?
I'm just looking at the overall timeframe from option one and option two, and when we had met. Earlier on, the worst case scenario from at that point anyways was two years, and I think we had talked about as early as twenty-one months. To to complete the project from start to finish and and now I'm seeing that the that twenty twenty-four months is the best and possibly. You know, well, if we don't start, then we're looking at. Twenty-seven months, so just wondering what what changed if it's. You know, realities of the permitting process or what's the what's the change from what we originally looked at?
Patient were given. Not so much that it may be what maybe was going to take, we want to get this thing done as expeditiously, but also under the same quality standards. To shorten that timeframe, and I speak for us, I think. Starting in the spring, when you have all winter to procure precast and materials and equipment and stuff. Much better opportunity that direction than you do.
And if it's only saving us that ma- most maybe three months of of time. Weighing that, it's probably a wash on. On how much extra it would cost us for out-of-county housing too and and things would just be easier doing it in the spring.
Wash in and frankly, well, maybe. Maybe not quite a wash, we'll take a look at those numbers, but there's a lot of risk building through winter that obviously in construction, we wish we could control that better and. Unfortunately, we just can't, that's why we tried to anticipate it and make. Realistically, make that a twenty-five point five month comparable. To starting in the spring, take it back. Now, you know, we're coming out of the ground with warmer weather, have all winter to procure the project, we would still get things bid out in option two. As soon as we're ready.
Late August.
We would start that bidding process.
So that gets us to option two, unless there's any more questions than option one. But option two would be a spring start. We don't have one bid package, we would get. Construction documents from Klein McCarthy on August first. Get them out on the street to bid about a week after, collect bids around the middle of September, establish our GMP. And then get everything procured, you know, then that gives the state plenty of time, you know, to get back and. I'd hope we'd have a state plan to be done and permit back by January twenty-five, but we still would have till thirty March. You know, but that gives us. Time Klein McCarthy doesn't have to split up the bids, so you have the savings on that, but the biggest thing would be getting everything procured and then hit the ground running in April twenty-five. That's the biggest, you know, thing on that, there's. You're still working through obviously a couple of winters, however, you're fully enclosed, you don't have those costs to go back. You know, so you're doing all the interior work during that versus outside work on option one.
And we do show an April first start date, you get a winter like this, we could have started earlier. You know, any other thing to keep in mind even on this option two is. You are building things offsite during, you got the precast procurement, the the shop drawings, the fabrication. These panels will probably be done over the winter months on the on the wall panels anyways and waiting for us to dissolve and deliver. Which I know a lot of times these plants like fill up their winter work as far as production and slots and all store them and. You know, but we still have road restrictions to deal with in either scenario. And of course, weather dependent on when we start, but April first, I think is more than safe on on digging for them. Even if we got to do some site protection, which we've considered after this fall, maybe cover some areas.
Probably worth noting that the Design and Operations Committee is recommending option two. And I don't know if there's any other questions at any other. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I was actually going to ask, what is the recommendation of? To design an operation and and maybe the sheriff and whoever else was involved. What their recommendation would be. Also, I I hear winter conditions and and I guess I'm still. Confused about, you know, winter, did we really even have a winter this year, so. You know, what if, you know, we have a similar winter next year to this year? Or are we going to say, well, maybe we should have started in. In November, I I don't know, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
You can guarantee it, then we can go back. Well, we know it gets cold, that's for sure, and the the cost, a lot of these costs really. Are in that initial piece of digging the ground, you know, we're we're digging in November, working into the guts of the cold part of the winter. And it. Everything has to be protected, heated from a quality control standpoint, from the state permitting and inspections. Nothing can freeze, so it's a lot of heat, it's a lot of sheltering. Once you're out of the ground and backfield and sort of protected from frost. Pretty straightforward.
So what is the R value of those plastic bubbles?
You know, part of it too is the production goes down a lot, especially, you know, slots lower. So I mean, you know, back before kind of looking at everything, probably a three three month time to get all the footings and foundations done and back build. And during winter, you're probably talking sixteen weeks, probably losing a month of production. You know, because there's be certain times you might, you know, back a couple of years ago, we did the crisis center. And we lost thirty-seven days due to winter weather, but we had a period of like three weeks where we couldn't pour concrete because it's too cold delivered, so there's. All different factors that go into it, not just cold and sheltering, you just lose production and.
I would say if we have favorable weather like this year, that would allow us to start earlier. But from a contractor's perspective, this is all on some bid in the middle of summer. And projecting what the winter is going to be, they'll figure winter conditions if we're showing them in November to center January, so if it does turn nice. They're the beneficiaries of it, not not the county.
So it would be my understanding that unless there's any opposition to option two, that we would. Request that we move forward with option two?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that that is the request on the table at the point, at this point in time is to see if the board is agreeable to moving towards. Option two, that way we can plan accordingly, it doesn't need to be a formal vote or anything like that, but this is just giving us directions so we can direct the team. So we'd we'd like your blessing on either of those two options this evening.
Richard?
Mr. Chair. Having lived in in Bemidji area all my life, I I would definitely say number two is the only way to go.
I don't see any opposition to, I think we're looking at moving forward with option two.
And option two is one bid package for the entirety instead of two? Okay, thank you, yeah.
Thank you for that, we'll move on now to the. Design phase.
Thanks guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Presentation.
Hi Danielle.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners, for those that haven't met me, Danielle Reed with Klein McCarthy. And on to the fun stuff, so. We have provided you with a site plan, floor plans, and then the three-dimensional images of our model. Our design team is a collaboration of multiple architects and engineers. And all of us model all of our documents and essentially the floor plan is a cut of that three D image. So we've been able to review with the design team, with the transition team, with the building committee. All of our designs in in three dimensions, and so that's why we wanted to show you guys what the design has is looking like and what is developed. I know the last time you saw a a site plan and a floor plan and. The design hasn't changed significantly since then, but we have certainly further developed the plan in conjunction with. The civil engineer, the structural engineer, mechanical, electrical and food service designers. So to wrap up the site plan image you see here, the the south part of the site is dedicated to the public. Sector, the public parking, we have dedicated ADA parking, we have dedicated safe exchange parking. A flagpole, boulders, providing a barrier between the public parking lot and the building. And we have noted two future expansion capabilities on the site. So that's something that where we situated the building, it was important for us to acknowledge that. If ever in the future, you needed to add on any housing units, any offices, any intake areas, we'd want to make certain that we have those areas established. This, the north side of the site is dedicated to what we consider more back of house or staff zones. So that's where the inmates are going to be brought in from the arresting officers. So you'll see there's a jet out on the north side, that's the vehicle sally port. So the arresting officer will pull their vehicle into the garage and then shut the doors and then bring them into intake. There's also a staff entrance on the north side, so all staff will be able to park on that north side as well as the receiving. And the maintenance staff will be able to come on that side. We also have the emergency or the standby generator allocated and fenced in on the north side as well. Any questions on the site plan at this point?
Anything of the generator, I assume?
Yeah.
Your chair?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the south public parking area. Just wondering how long of a walk is it from the parking lot to the lobby, I'm thinking of. Disabled folks, maybe folks with a walker or a cane, you know. They do have, there is ADA parking there, but I'm wondering how long. It is from the lobby to the parking lot.
It's approximately seventy-five feet.
Okay.
Alright, so next is, okay, got it. Alright, so we're looking at the floor plan here. And as I mentioned, the north side of the is the vehicle sally port, so you can see it's in light blue. And then the area just south of the vehicle sally port is the booking and intake area. And so that's where the arresting officer is going to exchange or hand off to the county staff and do the booking, so that's where you're going to have the fingerprint. The mugshot, any searches or any holding until that individual is moved. And from there, they're going to be moved into a transitional housing area, which is west of the booking area. Which is next to the mental health unit. That area is going to be. Staffed specifically to to address any mental health. Inmates or transitional, meaning they don't know quite the classification of the inmate yet. And so then from there, they'll be moved into a specific day room that's a classification, whether it's a minimum. Medium or a maximum security individual. And from there, they would move into the south housing area, so there's a control station on the south southwest. And then you can see there's other housing for the male minimum and then male medium, and that's in the central south area. And then other support spaces throughout the facility include medical, there's going to be a medical suite where exams occur. And medical staff are able to establish and distribute the medications that are required. There's laundry facility, full food service, so we've got a kitchen centrally located as well. And then programs, programs has been a paramount part of the design. And so the green area is identifying our central program area, so we've got a larger rec area, we've got offices for program staff. Classroom, a secondary classroom, which is going to be used for smudging in inside the facility. And then throughout the housing area, we have classrooms and recreation spaces that are going to be. Usable from within the housing pod. From a staffing standpoint, that's going to be incredible for for them to be able to view right there. The the inmates off of the housing area. And then the rest of the facility is going to be your support staff and administration, the public entrance is in the smaller yellow area. And then that's connected to a day window that's going to be available for day staff. So. Any questions on the floor plan at this point?
Do we get to move Amanda from a closet to an office?
I believe that is yes.
That'd be good, that'd be great.
Yeah, might even get a window.
I'm just wondering, the two gray rooms that only have outdoor access on the north side of the building there, what are those for?
Um, oh, that aren't labeled, so.
They're not labeled and they only have access from the outside?
Yeah, mechanical and electrical and that's by design, we want to make certain that any outside vendor or county staff don't have to. Within the facility to be able to maintain the building.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Speaking of windows, where are the natural lighting areas?
Yeah, we have natural light throughout the facility, primarily through skylights, so that's why you're not seeing them on floor, on the floor plan. We have windows on the program staff, so in that. Great, the green area, we have windows into the classrooms and then into the offices that are on the perimeter. And then we have a couple of windows and you'll see that in the images in the rec room. And then the skylights are going to be bringing natural light into the housing day rooms. And that also serves as a smoke evacuation measure for the fire department.
Is there a natural lighting coming into the? This main recreation room, it looks like a gym. Gymnasium type, okay, coming in through the ceiling there? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, I'm going to move on to the aerial images, so we're just going to march around the building, but here gives you a view of the. Public entry and the public parking lot. And then you can see on the right side, there's a little pop-up that's going to be the training room for staff to be able to do. Some some training exercises as well as act as a secondary area for for the sheriff's office to do some training as well.
See all the skylights, you can see all the skylights.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, and I think once we get around it.
All the little squares, the little white squares, the little white squares.
Big squares are the rooftop units for the mechanical system and then the smaller ones are the skylights.
Skylights, it's a lot of skylights.
So there isn't any above the gym?
No, those are on the side, you see, tho- those are actually on the wall, see the windows on the wall?
Oh, yeah, they're, okay. Could we, could we maybe enhance those a little bit? I don't, I don't see a lot of natural lighting coming into the gymnasium from those windows.
I think once we get to the image, I can show you how the light comes in. Because I've got an interior shot of that one. Okay, so this is back of house, staff entrance, you can see on the left side, the white door is the main staff entrance. And then right now, we've got one overhead door, we're going to talk about maybe adding a second one in the presentation moving forward. And then we've got dumpsters and then the vehicle sally port, and then on the right side, the green is the standby generator. And then coming, so I think the skylights maybe are a little more visible in this view, they're small. And then I wanted to note too, we've been talking about precast, precast is the primary structural. Element, but what it, what it, we are able to do is provide color and relief and and reveals within the precast panels. Themselves, so you can see the two different color tones. And then this is just another view from coming from the front. Alright, so this is image from the front. As you can see, there's two tones, the one. Single level, differentiating between the one and a half stories of the rest of the facility.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I see the entrance there and I see all those windows. What, I guess, why so many windows and and what's the cost of that?
So the windows on the left are going to be the windows for the inmate classrooms.
The entrance, that's.
Oh, you're talking about the the main entrance. Oh, you're talking about the, the main entrance lobby. It's providing daylight into the lobby, and that was actually one of the discussion items when we first reviewed the schematic design. Our lobby initially was completely um, popped up at the same elevation as the entrance vestibule. And then we had windows lining the perimeter of the, the top or the clear story of the lobby. In, in evaluating the cost, um, it was just decided that the, the only benefit would be to light the public lobby. And so we have been, we've eliminated those as a result. But I think that entrance, we could certainly look at reducing because it is solely there to provide daylight into the lobby. If that makes sense. And I'll show you an interior image to show you.
And then I'm also thinking, you know, what about cleaning? How, how?
Hmm.
I, does uh, Steve have somebody that's gonna?
Yeah. We've, we've talked about the, um, the need, the facility will need to have a lift, um, because we do have higher ceilings within the day rooms that light bulbs will need to be changed. And so, um, that's something that would be available, but that, yeah, that's something we can certainly consider as we move forward.
Well, Mr. Chair, I mean, I, I don't wanna change, I guess, we don't want to change if there's really no purpose or, or if we don't have to, but I mean, it's just gonna I, I asked just to try to get a better understanding for myself on, on why we need
Mm-hmm.
so many windows and, and if, oh, what's the cost? And could we, I mean, I think we all want to save some money, you know?
Yep. Makes sense to me. Yeah, because you can see the bottom, so there's three sections. The bottom two are essentially what is going to be borrowing into the lobby. So then this is a perspective looking back to the front. And so on the left, you can see the window into the day reception area. And then looking back, so to the left is going to be an entrance into the uh, secure facility into the programs area. And so volunteers coming in would be able to go directly into that space. Just another perspective from this, the back entrance. Okay, so this is looking into the booking area. And so after uh, inmate is received by the county, this is where they'll come in and get booked in. Um, and so then, uh, like I mentioned, mugshot, uh, fingerprinting and getting all of the information into the system. This is an image of one of the day rooms, and so what you can see here is there's two levels. And then we have a full height glazing railing, um, preventing um, anyone from being able to climb the railing, um, or jump over the railing. Just another image of a different day room, different size, different configuration. Um, in this case, you can see, um, we can see into a classroom or a counseling room off to the left. And then this is a view from within the mental health area. Um, what you can see is there's a little bit different furnishings and the um, cells themselves will be designed a little bit differently. They're gonna have correctional grade um, plastic furnishings, which is a softer uh, look, um, a softer feel than the traditional steel furnishings that will be in the rest of the facility. Another um, perspective from the mental health unit. And then this is a, a view from the upper level of the mental health area, just looking down at the staff post. And so the staff post is going to be halfway between the first and second level. And this gives a, a view of, of all of those mental health and transitional units in the central location. This one is an image of the minimum male uh, security um, day room. As you can see, the furnishings um, are a little bit softer. They're movable. Um, there'll be um, a, a few more amenities for them, um, within this unit. Um, and then it is a direct supervision unit, so staff would be posted within this space. And then another perspective. Um, this is showing the medical area. Um, you can see there is a skylight, um, coming through. So then staff, because it is a central location within the footprint of the building, um, it's incredible what just a little bit of daylight can do for your day. Um, on the right side, the exam space is uh, partitioned off with a security curtain. Um, just eliminates the door and having to um, be pinned into that area and you can still hear what's happening behind the curtain. Okay, so this is that rec room area you'd asked about and how much daylight would come in, so um, it's, it's going to be, um, I think a, a significant amount of daylight that comes in to this space. I think that's the last slide with the images. Do you guys have any questions on design?
Yeah, Danielle, just on the, you know, on that one where you showed the railing, is there plexiglass in between those?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that's what I assume, but I want to assume, so, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Alright, okay, so moving on to the next portion, I think Steve's got a few slides next. And then, I did. I did print these out, do you want me to hand these out?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. That's great.
Hi Commissioners. I'm Steve Shatter, Bell County Facilities Manager. Uh, just wanted to meet with you today to talk about uh, grounds maintenance options for our new facility. Um, wanted to kind of explain what options are available and hopefully uh, uh, get some direction from you, uh, and also provide a recommendation to you. Um, just wanted to talk a little bit about our process. This, uh, when we've started talking about this whole thing, I think the picture that you see on the slide to the left of the garage, the forty forty, forty by forty garage, that sixteen hundred square foot garage was probably the piece that brought up the initial conversation of, of why we need to review options. Um, you know, we didn't uh, know at that time that we needed a forty by forty, but it was a placeholder for us to make sure that it was part of our project and we didn't uh, um, uh, you know, mess out on the opportunity to make sure that we had the infrastructure that we need to be able to do the maintenance on the new facility. So in order to do that, we really needed to gain information from a number of individuals. We, um, uh, Tom had requested members, uh, uh, to uh, for a review committee that really involved our sheriff, our undersheriff, the jail administrator, highway engineer, uh, the solid waste director, um, county administrator, myself. So the seven of us got together numerous times to kind of review the uh, options that you're gonna see today. Um, as the screen shows, we looked at um, fully contracting these maintenance options um, to uh, doing the maintenance options in-house, um, a couple of different ways. We looked at uh, involving solid waste department and solid waste facilities into these options as well. So I would like to just take and, yeah, move forward with these options and uh, um, please, let me know if you have any questions on any of this as we go along. So option one was to um, fully contract out grounds maintenance. And when I'm talking about grounds maintenance, I'm talking about the lawn mowing and trimming of the grounds and then also all the snow and ice removal uh, of the facility. That includes parking lots, sidewalks, uh, entryways, everything like that. Um, so when we looked at what standard, you know, what, what were we gonna start with? We really looked at our campus here. We wanted to keep the same level of service as we do here on campus. And so when we sent out a, an RFP, request for proposal to uh, three different local vendors, we uh, you know, specified exactly what we were looking for. The uh, hours of the day, um, and what, you know, what level of service, so. Um, we did get back those three, all three uh, contractors responded back to us. And that's the total you're seeing on the left, that forty-eight thousand five hundred. That's an annual cost. That is twenty-four seven service. So if we get six inches uh, snow, um, or if we get an ice storm in the middle of the night, they're there to take care of it for us. To make sure that we can get our, uh, any emergency services to and from the jail, uh, get squads in, uh, as needed to uh, um, transport uh, uh, inmates and so on and so forth, so. Um, what you're seeing today is a, it's an, if they're, all costs are actual costs, um, what, what um, wages and benefits and everything as of today. So as of the contracts, uh, you know, that we received, they're, were based off of costs that they would be utilized today. We did not inflate them. So as we look at this first option, we look at some of the uh, pros and cons to this is that, you know, we really don't need any staffing for it, no county staffing. Um, we don't need a, any equipment other than we did put in a truck in there for maintenance, and I'll explain that in just a minute. But um, uh, the other positives to this option is that we don't, uh, there are no emergency call-ins for snow removal for county staff. Contractors would take care of that. Some of the cons to this would just be that we, you know, we can't control expenses as well as if we could do it in-house. You know, if, if those contracted services go up, then, you know, we, we would pay for that, have to pay that. Um, this is a, a more expensive, long-term option. And I do want to express that at the end of all, all five options here, I'm gonna give you a cost summary. And it'll, we'll walk through that and it'll show you the costs of ten, twenty, thirty year costs on all of these options, so. And then the last one would be, we're really not investing in any of our county infrastructure. Wanted to step back and talk about the truck. Even though the truck uh, is not going to be used in this particular option, um, as far as snow removal or grounds, it is still a needed expense to have a maintenance truck at the new jail. And so in order to balance out all five options, we did include a truck in all five options. And I will explain more why we did that in just a minute. Any questions on, on option one? So option two is that we would use uh, existing um, jail maintenance staff that staffing that we would hire for the new jail. Okay, I should probably clarify that, sorry. Um, not existing, but we would have to hire additional maintenance staff for the jail. That, um, this option would mean that those maintenance, uh, that maintenance personnel would cover this task. Same thing, same, same duties, same uh, snow, ice removal, lawnmower and such, but just we would do it in-house. When you look at the wages and benefits, you're looking at about eighteen thousand four hundred annually. You have a maintenance cost that involves ice melt, uh, salt, fuel, equipment repairs and such, so that's four thousand annually. Um, you have an initial equipment startup cost of seventy-five thousand. And that's uh, what that is, is it's the truck uh, for forty-five thousand, it's the plow for ten thousand. It's the snow blower and cab for ten thousand and the lawnmower for ten thousand. And then you see on the next line item down on the, on the uh, table on the left is the maintenance garage. That's that garage that we were talking about, that forty by forty. Um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, pretty, pretty significant cost, but it is a one-time cost. Um, and then a capital improvement uh, plan of five thousand annually to be able to replace the equipment every fifteen years. So it would be on a replacement schedule every fifteen years. The pros to this would be, it'd be more of a long-term solution, not a more cost-effective option than contracting out. You'd have uh, the ability to invest in county infrastructure. Um, and maintenance staff will be already working in this building, which makes these tasks much more efficient. Um, the cons would be, you know, staffing is required. We would be looking at, when you break it down and we figured the, the hours and such out of a, a full-time custodial position and a full-time maintenance position, it would be ten percent out of each of those positions would handle this task. Um, equipment is required. The uh, need to house the equipment, which that's where we're going back to the maintenance garage. And then there's emergency call-in, after-hours services for staff. Um, and then obviously the ongoing maintenance costs. So that's option two. There's five. Am I going too slow?
Actually, if we, if we could speed up a little bit.
I can, I can do that, absolutely. So, option three is the same as option two, except for the garage. So, um, when we started out looking at what we needed and, and, you know, whittling down the, the square footage and everything, we identified that, you know, we're really, we uh, uh, don't necessarily need that forty by forty. We dropped down to a six hundred square foot um, for a cost of a hundred and seventy-five thousand one-time cost. Now, we did a lot of work even the last two weeks, and as of this morning, that figure even changed. Danielle from Klein, uh, McCarthy provided us an option this morning that is this option. That's the option in front of you there. Um, that she passed out. The, this option adds three hundred and eighty-three square feet to the existing building. So it's not remote like the garage was. It fits into the, the footprint of the building. And um, it will handle all of our needs. I think it was a wonderful option. Um, definitely a cost-reducing option. And we would expect that we would, um, let me jump back to this slide here. This option three, we would expect that we would go from a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar one-time cost to anywhere between a hundred thousand to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So a significant reduction on that. It would handle our needs. Um, maintenance would be at the facility taking care of it, so. Alright, option three, any questions? Alright. Option four, um, we kind of ruled out option four and option five, but we wanted to still a, as a committee, I should say, we ruled them out, but we wanted to bring them before you, for your review and, and get your feedback. Option four was that kind of a hybrid model. We, we took solid waste employees and uh, uh, we would take, pardon me, we would take a solid waste employee, a new hire um, for seventy-seven thousand three thirty-four. Uh, and we would take twenty percent of that position and that individual would do the work that we're talking about at the jail. That will leave eighty percent for that individual to do work at the solid waste department and, and such. Um, we did not find that as a, a real viable option. Um, not to mention that we would still have to uh, buy equipment such as a lawnmower, um, and a bobcat brush that would fit the, that would have Such as a lawnmower um and a bobcat brush that would fit the that would accommodate the size sidewalks that we have at the jail. So I'll go through this uh um in the summary, but option four. All right, moving on to our last option, this is just the same as option four, except for it just has. Uh jail maintenance staff doing after hour snow removal. So the only difference is is that it's just thirty seven hundred and twenty dollars. Again, we wanted to throw it in front of you. We didn't figure it was gonna be a viable option for you. So and this is really kinda the nuts and bolts here of everything. When you look at this as a, you know. We wanted to break it down in a ten, twenty and thirty year uh cost summary. And when you look at it, um option three is really. Uh one of the best options as far as financially. Um I think as far as logistically, it will be as well. This uh smaller uh garage that we're just that that um Danielle provided to you here. Uh is a is a great option. It handles a little bit of future expansion for us as well. Uh not much, but it it handles just a little bit. And so it would be good for down the road uh as we uh as the building ages. You you wind up doing, having more more need for more services in it, so. So the committee is recommending option three. But would certainly open up the conversation to any feedback that you might have. The the other thing that I wanted to show is that the option three does not calculate in the reduction of. What the plan that you're seeing in front of you. So that's sixty five thousand off of the option three costs. Just so you're aware, so.
Tom, are we needing um a consensus to move forward with that idea?
Uh yes, Mr. Sheriff, we could get a consensus uh to direct staff to move in this direction and we can refine the plan accordingly.
Just a question, uh when I was on the steering committee, uh one of the items that came up was. Uh if it's attached to the building, does it need to have a special um. Ventilation or whatever to take care of the uh. Tank if you have to have fuel there on site. Do you have to have fuel on site?
No, 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 it would, the the garage would still need to have certain safety features. Carbon monoxide monitoring, that type of thing, flammable uh uh drain storage. So there's some costs there and everything, but we would have that whether it would be remote or would be, you know, attached, so.
Does anyone have any objections to moving forward with option three? All right, option three it is. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks a lot.
For chair.
Yes, sir.
Do we still have more of the jail presentation here?
Nope, I think that's it. Did Danielle, did you have anything else? Larry, did you have a?
Well, Mr. Chair, um. I I would like to make a motion that we moved in into a closed session for uh personnel purposes. We can't only typically don't make motions during. Uh a work session, but we have done it before. We several times over the last year and a half, we've made a motion to close the session during the work session. Given our next agenda item.
I I guess I don't understand.
Well, we're essentially personnel. We have, there'll be personnel uh um working on this upcoming agenda. So I I would suggest that we move into a closed session to discuss as a board uh this personnel related item.
He's talking of of the.
Oh, we're not, okay, you're not talking about the building anymore. No.
Thank you. Appreciate the input.
Thanks, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is all public information. I don't see why we would be needing to concern it. You know, our salaries are public, all the committee assignments are public, everything that we're talking about is public, so I don't see any any uh need to go into a closed session.
I agree. Well, Mr. Chair, I I made a motion. I'm curious if there's a second to it. Beginning of a work session.
All right, moving on to item number six, Commissioner Perdiem Policy and Assignments. You have before you and in the packets. The draft. Commissioner Perdiem Policy that was presented by the committee that was formed to talk about this. And it's a pretty concise. Piece of work. I thank Jody and Anne for their contributions to this. Appreciate that. I'm guessing you've all had a chance to look at it, uh looking for questions, comments, concerns?
And Mr. Chair, um per Commissioner Sumner's comments of last couple of board meetings. Um I would suggest that if we are gonna move forward with this tonight, that we would want to to adjust the committee assignments. Um and make sure that those are are adequately covered, as he alluded to uh at a previous meeting. Uh that he hoped that we would be able to cover those committee assignments. And so we will, I would think we would wanna go through and. And get that uh get that hashed out here um and so that we can make sure that there is coverage at those meetings coming up.
Let's do this. Let's 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 take the Perdiem policy. And if there's any questions on that, otherwise if there's not, we can proceed to.
Exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
All right.
Other than a. A significant amount of uh Perdiem payments going away, what. Exactly is changing here compared to what we already have been doing for years?
There really isn't. I I don't know that they, unless Anne or Jody, you wanna, I think it's just maybe immortalizing. What what we have done in the past to actually put it into a policy. That correct? That's that was my understanding of what we were doing. Right.
So, Mr. Chair, um.
Tim, just before you go, one moment. I I think maybe just to clarify that too is um there really wasn't a clear. Who is responsible for reviewing the commissioners' submittals for their perdiems? Um was it Tom? Was it Jody? Was it the accounting staff? Who was it? What this policy does is it makes it very clear that Jody is responsible as an elected official. For reviewing and approving or not approving uh commissioner expense reports. That's one thing that's probably uh. Added to this that that makes it very clear. And then also um a. Provision so that if a commissioner uh did not like what Jody had to say, they have an appeal process. And that is to come back to the board. Other than that, I think it's just pretty. Okay, all right, well, let's go on with, Tim, did you have a, I'm sorry, that I interrupted you.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I guess I I um. When this first came about, you know, I was kinda curious to know, you know, what the. What the plan was or or why we were, you know, uh reviewing, you know. Um perdiems and. Um committee assignments and and things like that, but I. I'm not too sure if I. I guess, to me, it seems like this kinda went out of scope of of what I thought was mentioned. I believe it was January, February, when when this committee was. Uh first formed and created, I guess I didn't know that there our system was broken. Um. Which is why I I'm assuming that you wanted it fixed, right? So what was broken is there was no policy in place to for our auditor to tell commissioners. What she can and can't approve, correct? So with this committee, it almost seems as if um. Uh commissioners are are telling another commissioner what they can and can't do. And I don't know if we're or if we're not all on the same playing field or or what. But I I imagine that being commissioners, we are on the same playing field. So one thing that kind of. Botheres me is is a few meetings ago, a few months ago, maybe. We were given this list of of committee assignments, correct? And this list was based off of one commissioner or the committee.
This was, this is, this list is the list of committee assignments that we've always had.
Yeah, the the, oh, the committee assignments.
Yep.
But. You as chair took it upon yourself to to highlight and and say this should be included in commissioner duties. Um this shouldn't be eligible for for a DM and expenses, correct?
Correct.
So that wasn't part of the committee's recommendation? That was, that was.
This, right, so this list is the committee recommendation. Um the items that are highlighted in yellow are considered strictly. County business.
So and and that came from the the committee that was formed.
From the committee, that is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So then what was the list that you gave us a a couple of months ago?
Beginning of the year, we made our.
Yeah, yeah, no, but but I recall Commissioner Carlson came into a meeting. Uh work session and and he was a huge spreadsheet and he said, I I went over. I went over this uh last night and and I just kinda highlighted what I thought, you know, should be. Um uh per diem and and expenses and things. Is is that, did that not happen at at a meeting?
That's this list.
Yeah, that's this list. So but that's the committee's recommendation.
Correct.
And and I think, so I'm I'm wondering, do you have any notes or or anything from? From these um said committee meetings on on what was discussed, how you got to this point? Because I know when we talked about it a few months ago, we we kinda ran against the clock and ran out of time, so we didn't really get to. Give, you know, further input on. I guess our thoughts. Um, you know, we just heard a hearing uh uh presentation uh for five different um. Uh five different op- options for grounds maintenance. We have five different commissioners and, you know. Can we submit what our thoughts are on what should be eligible and what shouldn't be eligible?
Exactly what we're, that's exactly what we're here for, Tim.
Okay.
Now, I do have a question for you, though. Are are, does this mean you're gonna sub, go into your committee meetings again then? Otherwise, what what's your question?
Well, no, it doesn't.
So what's your problem with it then?
My problem is, is I, we have a commissioner that's unilaterally submitted his list. That tells us what we can and can't claim for perdiem.
You know, that's not.
How about I submit my list and we can have a discussion again?
Tell us, tell us what you would, tell us what.
My god, why not?
Tell us what you would change.
There was the committee that made that. He, as we all do in committees, we all, we all do different work. And and Commissioner Carlson maybe did the initial fleshing out and then they went through it as a committee. And came up with their their recommendation as a committee, like we do with all kinds.
I I specifically recall that, you know, he said he went over this uh the night before in the whole work session and. And to me, that implied that was his his list, so. I I think Jody can shed some light on it, but the first thing that we did, if I recall. Is we went through to see which committees were viable, which weren't. Once we had that input from the commissioners, then we got together again with the committee. And validated that this is what we'd each heard. And then we met again after we reviewed this with commissioners. And then took those notes to make the uh probably the one that's in front of us right now, Jody.
That's correct. We probably met as a committee four or five different times. The first first text that we did or first assignment that we did is to go through that. Uh committee assignment list and that what you're talking about, Tim, a couple of meetings ago, a month ago, something like that. That's where we brought this printout and asked for input on each of the meetings. How often it meets? If the actual committee um entity provides a perdiem, do they provide mileage? Um is it, do we have a a delegate? Do we have an an alternate? And we went through as committee members, I know Anne and I did, we did most of the uh recording for this. We went through and wrote all of the notes that you five commissioners had had talked about. And then we went back and met two separate times after we went through this at a work session to fine tune that. So this definitely is a committee recommendation. It's the committee talked about. Every line item, every different assignment and went through those. Those different things that you guys had talked about as well. So we did cover it very thoroughly in committee. Does that help?
Maybe you 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 might have been confused because what I did is I took our original list that we've always had. And I did, I did the work to put it into a spreadsheet like this so that the committee could discuss it. And that's what I said, is I I did that work to put it into a form that then the committee could make decisions.
So the committee are the ones that determine that the budget committee is expense? Is that what the E stands for? Expenses?
That would, that would be some mileage. So in other words, if you were on the budget committee, well, if you were going to committee meetings. And you went to a budget meeting, you would get mileage for that.
So so how was it determined that um? What was, what should be included in a normal commissioner duties and how how does? How how was that determined?
Um we talked through that as well and polled several different counties in the area.
Counties? Do you do, do you know which counties offer perdiems and what they offer and?
We have that information down.
And that's what I was, I I think that's what I was asking too, is do you have notes of of your meetings?
And and I wanna say, just like like with Steve going through all of the different options. Um and saying that his committee recommended option number three. This is just this committee's recommendation to you as a board. This is not something the board. You you don't have to vote yes on this. This is what the committee felt was the best.
Can I submit Tim's recommendation to the committee? Or or we pass that point um where we are afforded that opportunity other than. The meeting that that we just got.
So if you have concerns on something, you could make that recommendation and and we could, you know, take that under advisement and. Vote it up or down um as part of the vote tonight, but uh. But again, you you say that you aren't gonna do your committee assignments.
Well, I just don't think it's right that, you know, a colleague of mine um wants to take. Um this opportunity away from, you know, not me, but. You know, future commissioners that that may have an interest in and uh running for, you know, uh public service.
Just one fact that you might find just kind of interesting. So the AMC has a a listing of. The counties that participate on like a benefit survey type thing. So they have in their seventy two county or seventy three counties that responded. Out of them, forty one collect perdiems and thirty two have no perdiem opportunities. So that's just something to keep in mind.
I got a copy of that one.
And I think what we were looking for. I'm sorry, what we were looking for the last time we presented when we were in the commissioner's conference room was this kind of. Dialogue and discussion about about the different committees as as we talked through them. Um, and by all means, that's that's what this is here for tonight as well.
But this is the same list that was presented there, correct?
It's the it's the it is the same.
Have been made.
Updates from the discussion at the board meeting have been made to it.
Things been deleted off that the.
Oh, yeah, but there hasn't been any uh changes of. What's what is included in the normal salary, what, you know, so I mean, there hasn't been any changes there, correct?
Well, the high the yellow highlighted committee assignments. Are considered part of your salary. In other words, we can't expect Beltrami County taxpayers to assume they're going to pay a county commissioner. Thirty-five thousand dollars a year to come to two meetings. A- and I think it's unfair to the taxpayers to assume. That they're getting ripped off. A- and and honestly, that's what I have seen happen. And so it was my idea to bring this committee together. And it was my idea that the taxpayers. Need to know that their county commissioners are giving them full value for their money.
So, Mr. Chair.
Beyond that, beyond that. We ask a lot of our committee heads when they're doing their budgets. We ask a lot of our county employees to do everything they can to save the county money. And I have seen that through our budget process. The unbelievable sacrifices that our committee heads have done to make this county work. And I applaud them, but we cannot, as commissioners. Throw this in their face and just say, gimme, 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 because I have an election certificate? I implore you commissioners. Have some thought for our county employees that work their butts off for us. Have a little respect for them and show a little leadership. That's what I ask. And I asked him, start going to your committee assignments. Otherwise, why are you a commissioner?
Because the people elect me. Why are you? People want me here.
They they want you.
If they if they didn't want me here, they wouldn't be voting for me time and time again. That's why I'm here. I'm here to represent my people.
You're not representing them.
Yes, I am.
If you're not.
Who are you to say that I don't represent my people?
You're not representing them at committee meetings.
Committee meetings, those aren't required. Our requirement is to be here at the county meetings.
It's part of your job as a commissioner to represent your people and represent the area from the county that you are.
County Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
That it says.
The ConCon area is only in your district and you're not going to attend that anymore?
I don't think you'll find a bigger advocate than county employees than me that live on my my city block. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Uh, let's say we were to do away with. All of the per diem in the county budget, I I this this dialogue, this. This isn't impressing any taxpayer, I'm I'm sure, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Point zero 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 two five percent of the budget is per diem. And I'd I'd make a motion to move on to the next agenda, but I don't think I can do that still.
So, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that we start going through and reassigning the district for um committee assignments. So those have representation um after after the vote tonight.
Sounds good. Uh, do you have any recommendations on how you want to do that?
Uh, just go line by line, the the Association of Minnesota Counties, we could just scratch. Um, Black Duck Ambulance, I would suggest that since I'm already the delegate for the meeting right after that, that I would be the delegate instead of the alternate. And that uh um you would be the alternate for both of those.
Yeah, why ain't representing my people the way Commissioner Carlson feels like I should? And and Commissioner Gosbick, you know, I don't appreciate you showing up to my committee assignments and checking to see if I'm there.
If you would show up to them regularly.
Showed up to your meetings and asked if you're there.
Yeah.
That's partly why.
I was asked.
I refuse to go to these committee assignments. I I don't need to be babysat.
I was asked to go because you you weren't showing up. No, by the people that are on the board because they needed a forum.
They know.
As a matter of fact.
They know the situation that I have two committee assignments on the same day at the same time. I can't be at two places at once. So I don't appreciate you trying to babysit.
I was covering for you.
No, you weren't.
Yes, I was.
No.
I actually asked you in one meeting. If you were going to be on at the Tuesday, Thursday meeting, I asked you at a Tuesday board meeting, you said, yes. They called me at home and had me attend, be on the phone because you didn't show up. So that's an example. So, okay, so Black Duck Ambulance, I would be the delegate for both of those and you would be the alternate.
For both of those, all right, I'll do that.
Uh, Mr. Chair, how how do you guys get to determine? I mean, how do you know if uh Commissioner Anderson or Commissioner Gould? It seems like you guys got a some sort of buddy system going on here, for example.
Trying to get work done.
Uh, so am I.
You're not getting work done by arguing.
You know, Commissioner Gosbick, you know, he asked you to go to your your Black Duck uh Joint Powers Board, right? So how is that, how does that determine? How um you called me the other day saying that Commissioner Gould attends my meetings. That there shouldn't be, that shouldn't be the case, that it should be a board decision.
Has to be a board decision.
So how how does Commissioner Gosbick make that decision to have called you and ask you to go to?
I didn't go as a delegate. I I went.
You did not get paid for it.
But how 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 is that determined, though? It's it's what I'd like to know.
Previous.
And that's why I want to have more discussion.
That was under the previous rules.
Previous rules, yeah, where any commissioner would cover for anybody. That was this year, previous previous to these rules.
That's why we're setting this.
That's why we're changing it.
Let's look at the HRA and just see who wants to be on it first. Is there anyone that wants to be on that?
H R A.
You already, yeah.
Yeah, what we we're skipping one, though, the ConCon Pilt one needs um. I would see who wants to be on that as a as a delegate for ConCon.
Well, it's closest to Commissioner District Three, I would.
I think you would be, yeah.
No, that would be Richard. He would be the closest.
With the the new map, you'd have Neebish, which is probably the closest to it.
We're not going by the new map. We have no new map yet.
I mean, that's fine. I'll, you want me to take it?
I, that's what I thought.
Joe, if you need to, if any of the one of these you want to jump in, then that's fine, but I'll take it. That's fine. I don't care.
I I could be the alternate if you want or.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we go into a closed session to discuss the redistricting lawsuit.
We're not going to do that.
No.
Um, moving on.
Ditch committees, um. If you uh.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we go into a closed session for personnel purposes.
Director.
Call the question.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we table the motion to go into closed session.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
No.
Aye.
Motion passes that.
We're tabling the closed session idea.
Moving on, ditch committee.
So I I thought if we put you as the uh the delegate for that possibly or or Richard or.
I'm fine with that. That's fine. You want to do it? All right, we'll go.
So. He's already the alternate on that, so.
I for some reason I was listed as an alternate also.
Right.
I'd be happy.
You can stay an alternate.
Why don't I stay an alternate on that?
Just change uh, change Richard to uh.
Okay.
The main delegate.
Was there any discussion during this committee about like how we rotate or or um committee assignments and things like that? There wasn't, and and seeing that's what I was kind of hoping to, maybe. Uh, some of the outcomes that I was hoping that we would have during uh this this committee is, you know, um. The the planning commission, you know, that seems to be a a countywide function, correct? So shouldn't there be an opportunity that?
At the beginning of the.
That it.
I hear that every January.
That'll be done in December.
But so that wasn't part of the the policy that you're you're presenting tonight, though, right?
No.
So shouldn't that be included in the policy? No?
It is. It says every January.
No, every December.
Or December, whatever, yeah.
In December, in December, everybody gets a chance to take a crack at it.
Yeah.
So can you can you point that out for me in this uh?
Every year, every year in December, everybody gets a chance to go through.
But I I would hope that there would be something more in writing, uh because. Every December, January, we we do have this discussion. Um, Commissioner Gosbick is is unwilling to uh give up his his planning commission. Um, seat, so to me, like I said, I I was hoping that. That would come from, you know, this this committee to determine and see which. Committees can rotate, you know, amongst commissioners on on a yearly basis rather than. Well, I've been on this committee for six years. I don't want to give it up. You know, so I mean, I I would, I would hope that we can, that that there was some discussion and and.
Mr. Chair, I did I did give up a a committee assignment when I first got on the board to Commissioner Sumner. And I and I then took it back over. That was the fair board. I took it back over the following year and as he did not care to be on it anymore. And I asked when I got on that board, when the last time the Commissioner Sumner had been at a fair board meeting, they said June, and it met every month.
This is such pettiness. This is such silliness.
So it's just a.
Mr. Chair, why don't we just make.
Not going to attend any.
Whoever's the alternate for Tim's committees right now will be the delegate. Why don't we just do that and move on to the next?
Let's just continue going through the list and finish this.
You're not the chair.
You aren't either.
But it is my suggestion. I mean, it it does sound.
Give me a break.
I mean, there there are alternates. I mean, why are you, Commissioner Gould is right, why why not just assign the alternates to?
We're going to be here all night.
You know, because it sounds like there's.
This seems like the perfect thing for your committee.
Is the jail steering committee still in existence?
I see, there's only conversation amongst the both of you.
So we just scratch.
So that's just on hold.
Yep, well, that's fine, but the problem is then then we wouldn't have an alternate listed and we would need to have.
Hear that out later.
And let's just finish this. It's not going to get any easier later.
No, there's only a couple more to go anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
So the jail steering committee, is that an existent thing?
Through it.
It's uh. Well, it's it's on hold. It it may come back, it may not. Um, juvenile, the juvenile training center board is probably an important one.
Uh, joint, the Joint Powers Natural Resource Board, um. Make you or somebody else an alternate.
I believe Commissioner Gould is.
He's a delegate, but we, you were an alternate, so I was just saying who else could be an alternate.
Well, I'm I'm fine to take it if nobody wants it. That's fine.
I just assumed not. I've got so many.
All right. Uh, the juvenile center.
Juvenile Center.
Joe, is that something that you'd be interested in?
Yes.
Do would you mind being the delegate?
Uh, it takes two delegates.
Right. It'd be Richard, me and.
Richard could do that.
That'd be fine. Okay, good. Um, and then one watershed, one plan. Is there anything left to do on that anymore?
I.
This would be for the Red Lake watershed.
The Thief River also meets and I did uh receive an email from uh. Um, Ray Hendricks, who was on this uh on there as well.
Well, we are, Joe, you're already a delegate, so I don't know if we need another one anyway.
No, that's Richard.
Or 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 that's you, that's you.
I'm I'm the delegate, but we need to have another delegate because there's more than one watershed, one plan.
One watershed, one plan.
Well, I'm willing to do it if nobody wants to. Richard, is that?
Well, seeing that's the thing is like.
I'll do it. All right. Then the opioid settlement.
Committee assignments and and people, you know, step up to do them and then now now we're being told that, you know.
Commissioner Sumner, you're out of order. Uh, Joe, are you interested in opioid settlement at all?
Yes.
Does anyone have any problem with Joe taking that one?
It meets at two to four P M on Mondays. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, Monday is flex.
Okay. So Joe is the delegate on the opioid.
And then the uh Shack.
I was willing to take that over.
Okay, if that's okay with everybody, Joe's got that. That's it. Done.
Hey.
Anything else?
Just allow to when you when you get that, we copy, send one to each person.
Sure, we'll do that. Yep. That wasn't that bad. Thank you very much. Moving on to administrators update, right on schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I wanted to touch base on a number of items. Uh, the first one is the status of the hiring of the county assessor. Uh, as you know, we conducted a full recruitment for that particular position. And after the full process had run its course, uh and the committee met and interviewed candidates. Uh, we'll be making a recommendation to promote our very own Caleb Bessler to the position. Um, he will be recommended. Of course, we can't just outright hire him because this is an appointed position. So it requires the county board's approval. Um, the way that the timing of this meeting and the agenda packets and all that worked out, we didn't have an opportunity to get it on this particular. Um, meeting agenda, so we'll be making that formal recommendation for appointment at the May seventh meeting. Uh, May third will be the last working day of the current assessor, Joe Skerek. Uh, we'll also have a retirement party for him that afternoon. I'll put some details together and share that with you because we'd certainly like you all to. Um, attend if possible. But uh if your approval comes on May seventh, then Mr. Bessler would begin uh in that role officially on May the eighth. So uh just wanted to let you know about that. We also have another retirement. Uh, as you know, Dick Moore, our natural resources um management director. Is announced his retirement. His last working day will be May thirty-first. Um, we've been advertising a position for a few weeks now and I believe it closes tomorrow. Um, we are planning to schedule interviews for that position on either April the twenty-fourth or April the twenty-fifth. Um, I would love to have a commissioner be a part of that. Uh, it is the land commissioner role. So as you know, the uh NRM director is also the land commissioner for the county. So it'd be great to have a county board member participate on the hiring committee. Um, if you're able to tell me now, that'd be great. Pardon me, that would be, I'm sorry, April twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth is the interview. Um, and we can work probably amongst your schedule.
I'd give a shout out.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson, is that okay with?
I guess I'm going to be still coming back from.
Well, the twenty-fifth, um, oh, that's my printout, but not yours, right? Okay, never mind. Yeah, so I'm, yeah.
And I, I have to. I'm going to have to check this.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson, that'd be great. If you want to just let us know what your preference is for the toward the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, we can, we can, I think, work around that, uh hopefully. Uh, depending upon the number of candidates, it could be maybe a half day, three quarter day, potentially a full day, depending on the number of candidates. Um, wanted to also update the board that, uh, thanks to help from Commissioner Sumner. Uh, we've identified a meeting date and time to engage Chairman Siki and other leadership uh from Red Lake Nation. Uh, we have identified Tuesday, April thirtieth. Uh, at one P M in Red Lake, uh, a date and time for a small meeting of delegates from the county. Uh, to meet with a small delegate group from Red Lake to talk about a number of issues, including uh legislation, recent legislation. Uh, the Yodina Project, general collaboration opportunities and such. Uh, imagine the meeting might go hour or two, um, perhaps slightly longer. I'm not sure. We haven't worked out those particulars. Uh, we could also add maybe a couple other topics, so if you had topics that you wanted to. Get included on this agenda, that that would be something I could run by uh their executive. And then uh the recommendation has been made to have two commissioners attend uh this meeting. Um, since Commissioner Sumner helped put the meeting together, I might suggest uh that he participate if he's willing. Uh, and then that would leave one other commissioner spot, but of course, it's up to the board to decide, uh, you know, who they'd like. Uh, it would be one P M on Tuesday, April thirtieth.
I will not be able to be at a Red Lake Board meeting that day.
Okay.
I cannot.
Okay.
I am available.
Okay, so. Okay, so Commissioner Carlson and Sumner. Okay. Great. Uh, thank you for that. We'll get more details put together. I'll let the, the tribe know that that date and time will work for us. Also wanted to just update you quickly on the compensation study, classification compensation study we're working on. We did receive several responses to the request for proposals, which were due yesterday. The team's going to meet tomorrow. To go ahead and rate and rank those proposals and potentially send out invitations to one or more firms. To go through and continue in the process. The hope is that we'll get through that process fairly quickly and maybe be able to. Bring a contract for your consideration and approval on the board meeting for May the seventh. The goal, as you know, is to try to get this firm under contract as soon as we can. I think that that schedule will work for us. So I just wanted to let you know that's kind of the plan at the moment, provided everything goes smoothly. Lastly, I just wanted to update you that as a reminder, the solid waste department will be closed on Thursday, April eighteenth, so that's this coming Thursday. As they have annual safety training. That's all I have for you.
Does anyone else have anything else?
Chair, I'm wondering with the contentions of the. Per diem issue, if we, if the other commissioners would like to have that pulled from the consent agenda and put on the regular agenda.
Yep.
Sounds like a yes from other commissioners.
Sounds good. That's fine. Yep.
But that, where are you going to put that on the agenda?
No, let's use.
Item twelve. Twelve or?
Item twelve A.
Move that. Seven D down to twelve A.
Yep. Sounds good. There's nothing else? This is, the meeting is adjourned until five o'clock.